Okay. We'll get the meeting started.
Recording in progress.
Okay, please note this meeting is being audio and video recorded. Motion is shown or examples, these may be omitted or amended. Please rise for the question. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pick a flag.
That probably looked as coordinated as it could have been.
Roll call, please.
It's you, yeah, that's you.
I'm here now, okay.
I forgot, I looked at my phone, I'm like, what?
Yep, I know. I'm here. Here we go, a roll call, Dr. Craft Rees.
Here.
Charlotte Crane.
Here.
Dr. Everwine.
Here.
Todd Emerson.
Here.
Mr. Ferella.
Here.
Ellen Ladazori.
Here.
Elizabeth Lonsberry.
Here.
John Mason. Steve Moran.
Here.
Elizabeth Oaks.
Here.
Robert Ronzio. Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Sarah Tucker.
Here.
Kimberly Weatherall.
Here.
And Rich Peters. Here, we have a quorum, okay. Any response from an audience? Seeing that, first up, it's student affairs, Sophie, I think you're online?
Yeah, hello, everybody. So happy school year, welcome back to the school year. So we have officially started schools, that was August 27th. The fall show for this year is going to be almost main. Dates for the show day are still yet to be determined. We were supposed to have a freshman welcome, August 12th, but unfortunately that has gotten canceled due to not many people coming and also not many people buying tickets, but that's okay. And then homecoming is taking place on October 25th from 7:00 to 10:00 o'clock.
Thanks, Sophie.
Yeah, my fault, thank you.
All right, next up, financial reports, there were some warrants previously signed, and then gifts and donations. Approval of the Wacon Regional High School Student Council Annual Fall Craft and Small Business Fair.
There's a change in the date from what was printed, so I'll read that off. But be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves an annual Fall Craft and Small Business Fair fundraiser Saturday, November 22nd, or Sunday, November 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., with backup dates of December 13th, 14th, 20th, or 21st from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. For the Wacona Student Council to raise money for community service projects to help local families around the holidays.
Second. Motion is second, any questions, discussions, others? Seeing that hearing, a roll call, please. Dr. Craft Rees.
Yes.
Charlotte Crane.
Yes.
Dr. Everwine.
Yes.
Todd Emerson.
Yes.
Mr. Ferella.
Yes.
Ellen Ladazori.
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsberry.
Yes.
John Mason. Steve Moran.
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Sarah Tucker.
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall.
Yes.
Rich Peters. Yes, motion carries. Next up, approval of Wacon Regional High School Volleyball Team Candy fundraiser.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves a candy sale for the Wacon Regional High School Girls Volleyball Team outside of the school day to raise money for the buddy program.
Second. Motion is second, any questions or discussion on this one? Yes.
Do they mean buddy walk, what is the buddy program?
I think they're referring to the best buddies.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please. Dr. Craft Rees.
Yes.
Charlotte Crane.
Yes.
Dr. Everwine.
Yes.
Todd Emerson.
Yes.
Mr. Ferella.
Yes.
Ellen Ladazori.
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsberry.
Yes.
Steve Moran.
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Sarah Tucker.
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall.
Yes.
Rich Peters. Yes, motion carries. All right, next up, September 34th, may I get an approval of minutes to the regular meeting July 31st, 2025, and August 23rd, 2025? Can I get a motion?
It's unmoved.
Second.
Second. Motion is second, any questions or discussions on this one? Seeing that hearing, a roll call, please. Dr. Craft Rees.
Yes.
Charlotte Crane.
Yes.
Dr. Everwine.
Yes.
Todd Emerson.
Yes.
Mr. Ferella.
Yes.
Ellen Ladazori.
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsberry.
Yes.
Steve Moran.
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Sarah Tucker.
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall.
Yes.
Rich Peters.
Yes, motion carries.
Nice, moving on to superintendent's report.
Okay. All right. You good? Yeah, I'm just gonna share a couple photos. So the first thing, I just wanted to thank those members who were able to come join us at Commencation this year. We had a great opening day and it's a fantastic start to our year. The, we kicked things off with a rock and roll performance from our modern band. The name of the band is Blood Tight Blue and they really just energized the faculty and staff and they played a Red Hot Chili Peppers song, Give It Away, and it really tied into the theme for the day. But to see our educators, you know, moving around to the music of the high school kids was pretty powerful and it seemed to resonate with the staff. So it was pretty, pretty powerful. I also just wanted to point out that this week, our Wacona leaders supported the rollout of the elementary school code of conduct. And so leaders from Wacona High School, these are fall sports captains, student government leaders, anybody who held a leadership role was invited. Under the direction of Ally Borowski, who really worked to coordinate the event across the district, we put two groups of students on buses and brought them to all three of our elementary schools over the course of two days, where they engaged in some question and answers around sportsmanship, friendship, following expectations. And the, in the classrooms that I was able to visit, it was really just honest conversations about what it takes to be a good person in school. And it was, they were pretty powerful. Our leaders did a great job connecting with the elementary students. They also modeled sportsmanship and team play. Oh, and yeah, and so they spent some time in the lunchroom going over lunchroom expectations, but also eating with our students and sitting with the tables and interacting. And then they were also out at recess playing dodgeball or kickball and
Gaga ball.
Gaga ball and swinging on the swings. And it was just, it was just really nice to see. And they did get out to all three schools. We put out some feedback, we got some good feedback to make it even better for next year or next time around. We're going to do a refresher in the spring?
Definitely the spring, I think the teachers want to have it every week.
Yeah.
Appreciate the help on the playground.
Yeah.
The word I got was the more often the better, but we'll definitely do something in the spring for sure.
Yeah, so that was a good cross-school connection that we were happy with the outcome there. So we had a parent of a preschool student in one of our schools reach out through the policy that we have in place around getting items added to the agenda. And they posed a few schools, two specific school safety questions. One around school safety planning and like, what are the steps we do to take to keep kids safe? And one specific to how we support students and staff who are victims of gun violence. And so after talking to Rich at the agenda setting meeting, we thought that it was appropriate to talk about this with the whole committee and put what we have in place to the committee. And it's, you know, I take this very seriously because, you know, in Massachusetts, parents are required by law to drop their kids off, you know, people that they love the most at our front doors and send them into classrooms with people that they don't really know and to care for and keep their children safe. And that's a huge responsibility. And I'll say that that was something that I felt on the first day of school as a superintendent. And I take it very seriously, the safety of our students. So I thought it was, it was kind of good to put some of this out into the community. As far as the steps that we take to keep our school safe, we have a school emergency planning council, the SEPC, which meets monthly. And district and building leaders meet with local and state law enforcement every week and Monthly, monthly, yeah. And meet with law enforcement and emergency responders from all of our towns. And we talk about best practices in school safety. We also debrief about any situations that may have occurred in our schools to learn from what we can do better. I know that Mr. Rob attends our CPEC meetings now as a district administrator, so we have district administrator and all schools are represented. And I know also, Charlotte is also a member. But these, you know, we meet regularly and we do have discussions that put school safety first. We have updated, we update and review our building level emergency plans at least annually. It's part of the work that we do every summer. They are updated with staff roles and responsibilities and crisis management plans so that we have systems in place to respond to any threat that we may face. And they're, those are not only put into place through planning, but also put into practice. And so we actually drill with staff and age-appropriate drilling with students as well. Those are everything from fire drills to lockdown drills, what to do in the case of a threat of an active shooter, and all the way to evacuation of a building and reunification. We also work closely with our local law enforcement and state police anytime that we have to respond to any internal or external threat. And, you know, that's anything from a possible weapon in a school, a weapon in a home that we may find could be a threat or to an e-bike, right? And so something I'll talk about in a little bit was a collaboration with Dalton Police and our schools around how to manage e-bikes because, you know, of safety issues. So we do work closely with both state police and our local towns for that. I talked a little bit about the annual trainings. We also participate in post-incident debriefings with any emergency situation that we have. If we have a fire drill, if we have an evacuation of a building, which we've had a couple since my time here, we always sit down with law enforcement and first responders and talk about what systems we have in place that worked, what could we do better? And always take any feedback from those and put it into action. We also have really strict protocols for building entry, including door access controls, video surveillance systems, and radio communications, which we make sure are updated. And we're always looking at places where we can add cameras, update cameras, or the software that runs them so that we all have very quick access to real-time monitoring any of our schools. And so, and we also follow national evidence-based protocols for threat assessment. So anytime there's a threat to one of our schools, either from or to a student, we use the Virginia-based model of threat assessment and we follow a very strict protocol of assessing the threat and then responding to it. Our school adjustment counselors, our school counselors, our deans of students, our principals, and Aaron and I are all involved at some level when there's a threat assessment and we always do lean on our local law enforcement to help us through that. So the, at the universal level across all of our schools, we have a lot of things in place and I just wanted to take a second to talk a little bit about that and ask if the committee has any questions around school safety that we could possibly, if there are, that we could bring to the Safety and Wellness Committee.
Any questions? Cheryl?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
I have served on the council for a little while now for my role at the fire department. It is run by the Dalton Police Chief, Diana Stroud. She also serves on a state committee related to school emergency planning. She does a really great job. And I would say, in general, even when any concerns come up, they are addressed quickly. And just want to confirm that I think it's really well-run, it's taken very seriously, and it's well-managed.
Thank you.
I could be mistaken on this, so. But I've heard that like Alice training is the like industry standard or the gold standard potentially. I don't, I don't know if that's the case or not, no?
That was the gold standard, so I'm a trained Alice trainer. So, and I was trained multiple times. I think the last time was several years ago. And there are some very good elements to Alice training. It is no longer the model supported by state police or our local law enforcement.
Better approaches.
There's better approaches. And so while there's some similarities in the Alice approach to our model, they are, we do not use the Alice model. And it's just, it's evolved to, it's basically evolved for districts that, not many districts are still using Alice.
We follow mass state police. It gives a little bit more flexibility in your response as opposed to the old-school lockdowns. I hate to say that because they've been around for over two decades, but it's true. Versus the Alice training, the mass state police are a little bit more nuanced with their approach in order for us to have some flexibility and think on our feet.
I think flexibility is good.
And I actually, because as somebody who was certified trainer in Alice, I actually asked our new state police liaison in August, when I met with him, about Alice and whether it was appropriate to explore. And he said that he did not recommend it.
Okay.
The second
Yeah, I just want to ask a question about, obviously, school safety one of the biggest challenges for districts and what important elements of school safety is the social media and getting information, right? And I know that, was it a year ago? We were using some software to sort of help us scan. Maybe it was Bark.
So we have
Yeah, 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 Bark.
When we moved to cellphone-free environment in our schools, we implemented a system called Bark, which monitors school communications. So anyone on any platform, including, you know, Google Docs, anything in Google Drive. And it will flag anything of questionable content or intent.
Okay, great.
So it'll flag inappropriate language, it'll flag, you know, if a student mentions the word depression or depressed, it'll flag that. It'll flag anything that might be considered of harm. It's a very sensitive system. So for example, I tend to know when our US government classes are doing their unit on the Second Amendment because the word gun shows up in their documents and we're getting multiple flags. It's, the system's that sensitive. We then are able to decide, as administrators, whether or not we need to involve some sort of outside group, take it to our dean of students or our school adjustment counselors.
That's great. Fantastic. So the Bark system is, any alert, and like Aaron said, is very sensitive. I don't know, we probably get a couple dozen a day. You probably get more, yeah. And the very severe ones go to every administrator and we can actually check off who's responded to it. And if nobody has, we can assign it to somebody immediately, which is, so it's actually a great tool and it's free. So it's been awesome.
Great, thank you, that's fantastic.
Yeah. The second question that was posed around supporting students and staff who are victims of gun violence, you know, which I think is an appropriate conversation in today's world. We have a lot of universal structures in place to support students and staff who may be victims of any sort of violence. So I wanted to just generally explain that we support students first by ensuring that we handle any disclosures with strict adherence to FERPA in order to protect the privacy of the students so that they feel like they can talk to people in the building and tell us what we might need to know. Our staff are trained on trauma-informed practices. We've had in-depth training on both depersonalization and de-escalation, which helps people to respond in real-time effectively to students who are presenting as victims of trauma. We go through yearly mandated reporter training, which includes signs of abuse or neglect or domestic violence. And aside from that, we have an emphasis on identifying and connecting students with trusted adults. We have two programs that run through all our schools. One is called the Two by Ten Mentoring System. It's purposely designed to give students who may need extra support, a check-in with a trusted adult. And we have a system called Check-In/Check-Out, which is exactly what it sounds like, which is at the beginning of the day, the student checks in with the adult and on the way out, they check in. And so we have many students throughout our schools that participate in both of those programs as an intervention because they may be, you know, either a victim of or affected by either any form of abuse or need the mental health support. We also have increased the support by adding counselors to our schools, thanks to your support through the last couple budget cycles. And we do have school adjustment counselors at least part-time in all of our schools and which are staffed now according to the national recommended staffing levels that we talked about last year, which was a big step for us to do that as well. As far as supporting staff who are victims, again, we handle those disclosures with strict adherence to HIPAA and mass right to privacy laws, which allow staff to come to us and talk to us about any incidents that they may be affected by. We have a very strong employee assistance program through our insurance cover, MIA, which includes really solid mental health supports around counseling services, family outreach, and supports for handling everything from substance abuse to domestic violence. And so we both supply that to staff members who may come and seek support. And we also proactively provide support in the case where we may notice signs of a staff in need of support. And our principals are, actually take the lead on that and are usually the ones that initiate the conversation. And then our HR department works to set up the appropriate counseling or whatever other support a staff member may have. We also include flexible scheduling that goes through the principals for medical appointments, counseling sessions that may be needed that can only fit in through the school day. We participate in workplace safety planning. And so what that involves is if there's a situation where a staff member may be at risk, we work closely with local law enforcement to help protect, enforce protective orders. So if there's a legal order, a restraining order, or just a situation that may pose a threat to a staff member or a student, our local law enforcement's do everything from, you know, let us know if we should be looking out for a car and license plate numbers and things like that. So they're very active in those responses. And also, as a whole, for both staff and students, we've also shifted towards summer store approaches to avoid re-traumatization of any staff or student who are experiencing abuse. So rather than coming at any of these situations from a punitive lens, we try to be supportive and restore a sense of safety to the community. So those, so those are the second piece of that question, the supports that we have for violence and to support anybody who's a victim of violence and in gun violence specifically as well. So if there's any questions from the committee, again, if there are any work that could be done in this department, I think it would be appropriate venue to send to the Safety and Wellness Committee for further discussion.
Any questions? Not seeing any, okay.
In a similar, this is the end of my report out. I just wanted you to know that I did send home a message to families in response to e-bikes, which is a growing issue. That bike right there, it costs less than my mountain bike and goes 40 miles an hour, okay? And anybody, you can buy it and put it together online. And so the, what we're seeing is an uptick in students, A, riding them to school, and most are doing that appropriately. And, but more concerning, we've seen them on our sports fields and on our high school track. And so we've been, we've been monitoring that and addressing that and most people have been responding very well to any, to the ask. But I thought it was important to try to get ahead of it. We have had some incidents that where students could have been seriously hurt. And I know the Dalton Police Department is also trying to combat the use of, the unrestricted use of e-bikes on our streets and sidewalks. And the bottom line is they're dangerous for kids. So in my message, I just asked, please don't allow children to wear them without helmets. We do, if we see students without helmets, we do ask them to please wear a helmet, to follow all traffic laws and signals. We have a very, some very busy intersections, especially in front of Nescus, where students are riding in on the streets. And that they would ride at safe speeds, especially around pedestrians, in that they, that the bikes that they're riding are actually appropriate for their age and skill level. Because again, I think this is called a Level 2 e-bike, which goes about 40 miles an hour. The Level 3s go much faster than that. And so, you know, it's like a dirt bike that you can buy at Walmart and it's, they're, they pose a risk. So we're enforcing a restriction on our school property other than our roads and sidewalks. We're asking them to be parked appropriately. And we are billing families for any damages incurred through their use on our track or on our fields. So I just wanted everyone to know that in case you hear anything in the community that we're cracking down on e-bikes.
Any questions? Liz?
I know one of the things is about properly fitted helmets. And I know that Dalton Police Department has the Bike Rodeo where they offer free helmets through a grant. Is there any way that we can tie that in and be able to help offer helmets if kids don't have them, but they do have these e-bikes?
We publicize that event. And I'm not sure if we can directly participate in that, but we can look in, we can
They also don't have, like, for older kids at the Bike Rodeo. Like, I go and, like, they don't have bikes or helmets for my boy's size.
Okay.
Who are 11 and 12. Like, I mean, they're big, 11 and 12, but there's the helmets that are offered there do not fit them.
The good news is, most of the bikes that we do see going by now, and I see Nescus more than the other schools, are, they do have helmets on. But if a student reported that they didn't have a helmet and couldn't obtain one, I, we would, we would figure out a way to do that through our, I mean, our PTOs are really good. Our teachers are really good about coming together to support kids in need. And we can look at how to systematize that.
My suggestion would be, and I'll talk to you afterwards, but we've, the fire department sometimes gets coats and stuff and we can probably get some helmets if that's necessary.
Thank you.
What's our coverage for cameras? Like, I mean, I've seen the kids a lot, you know, on the obviously on the athletic field between Nescus and Wacona on the back path. Do we do we cover that, cameras? Can we? I'm just curious. Maybe you don't want to get into that.
Well, I'm familiar with Wacona's camera coverage the best. And our camera coverage is all based off of the the building.
Okay.
Joe, I'm looking at you, right? We didn't add any others?
Yeah, no, at Wacona, everything is mounted on a building or on a pole in the parking lot.
Right. Well, yes, of course, there's the parking lot cameras. We don't have any cameras that are situated among the athletic fields.
Okay. But we do have a clear view from the corner of the building out towards the baseball field.
Yeah.
And
For sure.
I mean, we can we can see them. It's a matter of being able to identify who's actually on the bike.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, just be mindful, e-scooters as well.
Yeah.
Right? Because it's e-everything.
E-everything.
E-everything. And just something else, and it's probably not an issue, but charging, fire safety, lithium ion batteries, just something to think about, you know, where they're being parked and whatnot. So if it's an issue.
At Wacona and Nescus, they're on the bike racks, which are pretty far away from the at Nescus is actually by the tennis courts, which is pretty far away from the building.
Yep.
And at Wacona, it's in the far back corner.
Far left corner.
Yeah.
I I don't imagine there's power.
There's no power.
No, there's no power.
There's just bike racks without any charging stations.
Thank you for that.
Let me add two things.
Yeah, go ahead.
We've mentioned Dalton Police tonight a lot. I'll mention them one more time. I just want to give a big thank you to Dalton Police for helping monitor the intersection at Nescus. When we started the school year, conveniently, a major construction project started there about the same time. Being new to Central Office, I never really fully understood the Nescus intersection or experienced it. And what we were seeing was was a bit concerning with all the construction. And now it's been turned into a superhighway, and lots of people are driving fast. And people are trying to enter and exit. But most importantly, kids that are trying to cross. Dalton Police, in the short term, have come down and tried to camp out in front of Central Office at that intersection to monitor both in the morning, during morning arrival, and during dismissal in the afternoon. And not only are they doing that, they're catching people. So that are that are doing, especially running the the crosswalk and so on. So I just want to give a shout out and a thank you to them. And a complete right turn from school safety. In Dr. Hennault's superintendent's update, there's a particular item under my agenda, my heading, that has to do with the formation of a district artificial intelligence AI ad hoc committee. Mr. Stewart, don't worry, you don't know ad hocks for you.
I'm still on the ad hoc.
Yeah, okay. But we are trying to put together a group of stakeholders that will help inform some best practices around AI within our district. I've got a number of teachers who have signed up. We have a student who signed up. I've coerced our tech director, Joe Sturgis, to be part of it. But what we're looking is for one school committee member to volunteer as tribute to the AI ad hoc committee. So if you're interested, please let us know. And and we will start our meetings by early October, the latest is when we'll get started. So.
And then I just, the last thing I'll say is I'm really excited that all of our state representatives and state senator have responded to my my letter, where that I and I asked for them to come join us in a tour to see our schools and talk about possible updates to Chapter 70 funding that I think would benefit our district. And all have either confirmed a day and time in a plan or are in the process of settling on a date. But that was, I I was really happy about that and and thankful that our elected officials are listening to the needs of our rural schools. And that comes from you? Okay. And? I have, yeah, could you?
Proposed fiscal year 2027 budget calendar.
Tell me to read that.
Sure.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee picks up the FY27 budget calendar as recommended by the superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on this?
Can I just say one thing? So this was not in the packet. I do have it up on the screen right now, just so. Finance did look at the budget calendar and the guidelines that are coming up soon. The only change that the finance subcommittee made was the January 26th meeting. That would be a public hearing for the proposed as a roundtable for the town, so they could see the initial budget. So that's part of, I think, the regional agreement, which would come into effect next July, this upcoming July. But we did add it for the January meeting. So that's the only change to the calendar from last year.
That's the January 22?
January 22nd meeting. So the January 8th meeting would be the initial budget, and then the January 2nd, the second meeting that month would be the public hearing.
Any questions? Okay, roll call both, please.
Okay, 27. Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen Lattazori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsberry?
Yes.
Stephen Marans?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay.
That's it for you?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Next up is myself. So first thing is a school committee self-evaluation. And I think with the folks who did do the evaluation, there wasn't a lot of you, which I think is a sign that I think people are pretty happy. They're not upset. They're not chiming in and, you know, complaining. There really was no, really, for the most part, no negative feedback. There was a couple of comments made that I think, you know, I'll share is that I shared with Sarah's already, that if you're not aware, the training that goes on at MASC down in Cape Cod, that is funded by the school committee, by the school district, through the school committee's budget. So it is a paid, it's all expense paid trip to Cape Cod to go to that event. If you want to sign up and go, I don't want you to feel like, you know, you you can't go, you can't afford it. Of course, you have to take a few days off, so that's a different problem. But yeah, that training is available for you. The other thing is, I just wanted to remind everybody, just, you know, I think we do it really, it is really evident here that everybody is respectful to everybody else and their opinions. The conversations that we have are respectful. And I just want to make sure everybody maintains that, keeps that going, because that makes it a much more enjoyable experience to get to support the school like we do. So I thank you. I am going to say that maybe next year, the self-evaluation, do some work, or, you know, myself or somebody else, do some work on really making it a lot simpler and maybe faster so we get more response, maybe open-ended, a little more open-ended, so we can get some feedback. Because feedback is important to make sure we're doing the right things. Like I said, I think if we were having problems, I think I would have heard from us. But I think it's going well, and I appreciate I appreciate everybody that that we do treat each other with respect. I think that's really good. So and everybody's voice is heard or can be heard if they want to speak. So, all right. Next up is the, I don't know if you saw today's paper, but their regionalization discussion is happening right now in in Adams-Cheshire Regional District. There's some challenges going on up there, and there are lots of different things happening. And Mount Greilax involved, and the North Union, and there, you know, there's a lot of discussions going on. And it it may impact us a little bit because we actually have, I think, 30 students from Cheshire and students from Savoy and a couple others. So what I actually today, I just sent a note to the woman at Adams who is kind of bringing people together to talk about this, just to make sure we've got a seat at the table, because it may impact us one way or the other. So it may be that I might ask one of us or myself to maybe sit in on some of these discussions. I know Burke 12 might be getting involved. So, you know, Jake might have, you know, an input there as well. But I think there is a chance that it it impacts us. So I think it's important for us to be there. If we do get asked to join ad hoc committee, probably next month, we'd have to vote on officially joining that, if it's an ad hoc committee, to have somebody there at the table. So stay tuned on that. Any questions on that or comments on that? Okay, seeing that. All right. The last thing is the regional agreement update. I think you saw the note from last night at at Walt Dalton. We now have a, well, we don't have a regional agreement yet. We have, we have to send it to the state, but we have an uptown's vote report to get it passed and moved along to the state. And hopefully that that goes through smoothly without any problems. I want to thank, really thank Todd for spending a couple of years cheering it up. And then Dave Stewart, spending the last couple of years taking it over the finish line. So a lot of effort from everybody involved and really a lot of work. And I really appreciate that. And it's just great news that we've gotten this done. And it's not a trivial thing to get done, to be honest with you. Knowing that that Gateway has been trying for 25 years to get one done and haven't been able to do it. So we're doing pretty good. Nice work, everybody. Okay. So any questions?
What's the timeline for it at this point now?
So we have to send it to MARS, not to MARS, we have to send it to DESI. And we're going to do, you know, talk to MARS about them helping manage that through DESI, who goes to. I really don't know how long that will take. My guess is, though, I mean, it's set to take place in July. So I imagine they'll, I don't imagine they'll sit on it too long. Because, I mean, the town spoke, and that's really what it's about. As long as the language is there. And we've been, we've been keeping them up to date on the language all along. So I don't think there should be any snags there. But I don't know how long it'll take. I don't know if you have any idea.
I would imagine it would be approved by the time it would go into effect in July. I I wouldn't be surprised if it takes several months, if not a little bit longer. But I would think that between now and springtime, we would have it.
I would say that we have no experience with it.
Yeah.
No, getting it past through DESI, we have no experience. So I don't know if anybody else does have that experience.
And we did email MARS this evening that the towns had passed in. We asked for their advice on next steps. So maybe we'll find out probably shortly.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, next step.
If I could, I just want to ask a couple of things on that, as well as thanking Todd for, you know, really, you you carried a lot of the weight here. Bonnie Di Tomaso, who's no longer on the committee, she she was really the first chair of that committee. She did a lot of work. Bonnie Connor of Hinsdale had done some work as co-chair for a while before before then that came to Todd and then myself. And really, the bulk of the work was done by the towns. I mean, they had to put in the effort. They had to understand some of the difficult issues. And we didn't agree on everything, and that's okay. But in the end, we we got an agreement done that was, I think, the best that we could do. And some of those towns really put in, put in the effort. So.
Thanks. All right. Next up is curriculum.
Good evening, everybody. Curriculum has not met since our last school committee meeting. So but we do have a meeting scheduled for September 30th at 7:00 PM on Zoom, where we'll be discussing the finalization of graduation competency requirements, get a quick update on the science and ELA piloting for the new curriculums in those buildings in Nescus and Wacona. And then, I don't know, we may end up having some MCAS.
Yeah, so the I was hopeful that we would have our official MCAS results out a little earlier this year because of how early we received our preliminary results. However, I think it was last week that we've we've, the webinar that goes into interpreting the data is usually scheduled right around the release, and it's not until September 26th. So it won't be, yeah, it so it'll likely have to be in October. And I would like to, based on the feedback from the committee of not having a three-hour marathon meeting, if we could explore between now and the next school committee meeting, setting up a workshop model of our school committee meeting, where actually you would, each each level would be presenting to the groups of school committee members on their MCAS results and their school improvement planning, which can be done in public session. And I've participated in a few school committee meetings like that. I'll I'll talk to Rich about the logistics of it and then present that in to the subcommittee. And we can see if we can move that into our meeting. So basically, we would have the small group setup like we would in a classroom. Each school or each level would have a a table where they would be going over their MCAS data and how it informed their school improvement plan. Some small groups of school committee members would hit each table. We could probably do the MCAS results and the school improvement plans in about an hour and 20 minutes that way. And I could give the overarching, full, deep analysis that I like to do to the curriculum subcommittee. And and then when you you would report out on the full results, and then the committee would get both MCAS and school improvement planning at the same time in a shorter amount of time. But I will design that and arrange it if you if you would like to try that. And if not, then we can do the old-fashioned presentation.
I'm open to anything.
That seems like it really user.
My only concern, it would be, because I know we do get audience members who come to school committee meetings for MCAS. So how would would they be able to see us in discussion or?
We would have the cameras set up as we do, and it would be in a room like this. We actually, Joe is is pretty good at setting up our cameras. We have some smart cameras that'll follow the action. And we would also, Beth would be sort of taking notes of the whole of the interactions as we go. And so she would kind of be an observer to take the meeting notes, which which I know that she could do. And that we could do that. We could also have an individual camera at each table if we needed to. And there's ways to do that.
Okay.
Joe, is that okay?
Tire tracks, I expect.
Tell me phone.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next, you do. Okay, next up is finance.
Good evening, everyone. Finance subcommittee met on September 15th. I'll go over our report first, and then we have a couple of motions. I'll save those for the end. First, we met with Sure Deal, Sure Deal Fernandez Alver from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission to discuss potential funding for energy efficiency projects. We talked about the possibility of leveraging existing grants, or they actually could go out and find grants for us that we could then use to get energy efficiency projects done within the districts. One of the things we talked about was potentially getting solar on the roof for Beckett-Washington and getting the roof fixed as part of that as well. The other thing we talked about was the potential for heat pumps to supplement hot water at Crayville, as there's different types of funding available. So those conversations are ongoing. Basically, BRPC would be responsible for securing the grants for these projects, and then we would have flexibility in how we would manage them. The timeline for all of that base is is essentially that a feasibility study, study would be done the first year, and then the second year, and the actual implementation, should we find the grants and be able to move forward with those projects. We also got an update from Director Reinhold on the concession stand. I believe there was an inspection yesterday or today?
I think today.
Today?
We were there yesterday, and I wouldn't have believed that it was going to come together. And it's looking, it was almost ready to go yesterday when we were there.
At the finance committee meeting, it sounded like it was cutting it close.
It it's, I don't know what the update from today, but it it was.
So it sounds like it's very close. They're bonding up a few things. It sounds like It sounds like they should be, there still was confidence that it could get done before, oh, was it that?
Tomorrow. We'll find out tomorrow.
So we'll find, we'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Two things I have to have motions for, but I'll just talk about them briefly first. We went over the budget guidelines and instructions. I don't think there was any changes to, to those.
Just the first two guidelines about the revenue for the initial.
Right. It was changing it so that it, when we present these, the, the initial budget, it's, here's all of our expenses essentially, and this is what it is going to cost us to run the district instead of trying to guess what our revenues are. So that we have a basis of here's where we're at, here's where we're going. This is what it, mostly contractual obligations and cost increases and things so that we have a good place to work from, from there. And so I guess I'll do that motion first. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the fiscal year 2027 budget guidelines and instructions as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second. Motion in a second. Any questions?
I have a question. So I know Greg, I think you were working on some with better tracking. I know you did do a lot of work of transferring salaries and things from a grant or in a grant, out of grant that we've heard in the past. Sometimes I have a hard time following that.
So with this initial budget, with us removing the revenues, we're really going to look at year, year, year-over-year expenses of all funds. So that way if someone's budgeted out of a grant, if there's something budgeted out of a revolving account, it'll all be shown in that initial budget. So the committee and I think the towns can see what it costs to run the district. And then we pull the revenues in and the tentative budget, it kind of completes the picture.
That's great.
Thank you.
For doing that.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Dr. Krefreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Alum Matazori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsberry?
Yes.
Stephen Morantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item is that the district has a new placement in a subseparate classroom, which comes with an IEP that requires a one, F, one, a full-time special education paraprofessional. And so we have a motion to approve of that. So be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School District School Committee approves the addition of a full-time special education paraprofessional for Craneville Elementary School due to student need.
Second. Motion in a second. Any questions on this one?
Greg, do you want to explain the funding that we don't have to come up with additional funding for that?
So we do still have some open positions in the district. So the fact that we have to build those positions, it kind of saves us the money. So we, we can have this. So no additional money needs to be moved around for other, other expenses at this point.
Also, I understand this is required by state because of the students' IEP.
This is on the student's.
We had to have it.
And this actually prompted a, a review that we're completing now. We started this week of all of our paraprofessionals and their assignments in the district. And in looking at how many FTEs we have, nearly all of them are attached to a student IEP, so a required service by law. But we're going to have some exact numbers for the finance committee the next time we meet. And really looking at how many one-to-one, two-to-one and full class pairs we have. The only general ed classroom pairs that we have in the district right now, I believe, are in kindergarten and preschool.
In high school.
And in the, one in the high school. And so, but we'll have solid numbers for the next meeting.
Any other questions, comments on this? And Greg, just a quick, just confirmation, we do recover some of the cost for circuit breaker, right? So.
If the students' expense, overall expenses meet the threshold, then yes, we would.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Dr. Krefreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Alum Matazori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsberry?
Yes.
John Mason? Stephen Morantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Yes.
And Rich Peters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our next finance subcommittee meeting is scheduled for October 20th at 6:30 at the central office where we will discuss first quarter financial reports and review long-term capital projects.
All right. Next up. Personnel has not met. I will make the comment that we, the negotiations are still going on apparently. They didn't vote on it, so that's why we didn't have a second report meeting because they didn't really have clear explanations for what, what has changed. So we met with them and heard what they were trying to do. So we are meeting again on Monday and hopefully we can end it there and move to a vote. So it really isn't, nothing really substantial. So I don't, I don't anticipate any concerns there with any problems, but just a bit of a delay and a little bit of paperwork that Greg's going to have to do when I do pass it with respect to the pay having retroactive. So. Safety Mullins?
We met this past Monday and at our meeting, we discussed with Kelly Jean Gallagher, who is the district, head district nurse. She told us that at this point, the district doesn't have any unexpected illnesses with the start of school beyond what they would see coming in from the summertime. And that also Craneville has a new nurse. So she was excited to have her coming into the, into the group. In addition, she also reported about attending a countywide meeting with local board of health representatives regarding measles back in May. And we had asked her to fill in with that, but she was not available this summer. So she let us know that they helped to encourage attendees to confirm immunization data in case of a measles outbreak and so they could better prepare if there were that, if there was a situation. And that in addition, the, the district has a new health software system that allows student records to be synced with state database, which makes things easier for seeing who is immunized and who is not. We also discussed with Lisa Herland, who is the district interventionist and content coordinator for social and emotional and behavioral health. We discussed with her an outline of student mental health program right now. She went through and described what the district has set up right now with school adjustment counselors, board certified behavioral analysts, registered behavior technicians, and a few other staff that help in those situations. And she laid out how those are intertwined with the tier one, tier two, tier three interventions for students that have higher needs. She also gave us a rundown of how, of what she is hoping to see in the district for the future for providing more support for mental health, mental health support, both for students and for staff, specifically looking at trying to have more school-wide SEL education in the high school and improve the model student, the model of student support. Implement the science of suicide at the 10th grade, which is already at the sixth and seventh, or sixth and eighth grade course levels. Update the elementary school SEL curriculum. Expand tier two interventions across the district and then improve the use of trauma sensitive practices and expand well-being and self-care for the staff. Also, we, the, the last big thing that we had was a, the 2024, 2025 infractions and disciplinary report that we got from Dr. Hennel. He presented, so the official name of it is the District School Safety and Discipline Report, which is the report that's required to go to the state. It tracks all drug, violent and criminal offenses, disciplined actions such as suspensions, removals and expulsions, and non-drug, non-violent and non-criminal offenses. This ties into the report that we have gotten in previous years. He was able to give us a quick rundown of the numbers of what we had. And for the most part, it seemed that things have gone down over the course of the past year. Our biggest places where we were having issues were the, of most types of offenses were non-criminal offenses followed by obscene behaviors and then drug and tobacco, which Dr. Hennel reported is almost exclusively vaping. We, I know that we've talked before about the vaping protocols and what they're doing to support that. So it's still something that is in the works of how it can be continued to be developed into a more effective program. The last part of that includes a report on the bullying, which did remain high compared to last year. However, this is likely due to the droplet form that we've been talking about, about it's easier for parents and students to access and report when there's issues. But the findings of bullying are still just as low as they have been the previous years. Beyond that, we actually had a lot of crossover with, with Dr. Hennel had reported in his superintendent report. So I don't want to go over that too much more. Our next meeting is going to be at the end of October or early November. And we have a handful of topics that we've been looking at, including summer meal program recap, talking about the, the high school student peers program that Dr. Hennel also brought up already, and looking at the vaping and drug protocols with Jared Shannon.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay. Next up is the corner building project. And this is, the building project has not been closed yet, so we do have to do another ban. And that's what is on the table here. Since we can get a motion to approve as written.
And then this will be available.
It's going to be in the official minutes.
This will be in the official minutes. Okay. So, so I would make a motion to approve the bond anticipation note as written and included in our packets and the handouts that we have tonight will be included in the minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions on this? Seeing none or hearing none. Roll call, please. Did I get a question? Roll call, please.
Dr. Krefreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Alum Matazori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsberry?
Yes.
Stephen Morantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Pretty confident this will be the last one.
Yes. So we're hopeful. This is a 12-month temporary ban, but we are hopeful by at least March, we will have figures for the FY '27 budget with the permit bonding.
What's holding us up at this point?
We're waiting for the MSBA to get back to us in the audit. And they have all our information, so all's in their court.
Yes. It has been for a while. So, yeah. Okay. We already talked about regional agreement ad hoc.
Nothing but relief.
And we'll keep that on the list until we get approval from DESI. And we'll keep that as an ad hoc, keep it alive in that respect. So next up is the superintendent evaluation ad hoc. Barbara?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. We met on Tuesday, September 9th, and we had a very productive meeting. And special thanks to Dr. Hennel for being there and for being so agreeable. We reviewed the feedback regarding our newly revised evaluation and we made some minor changes, mostly in form of the text of it and the format of it. And the suggestions that were made were very viable and we were easily able to modify it. It was decided that while all standards and indicators would be evaluated, Dr. Hennel will determine the focus indicator. If you remember on the sheet that you used to evaluate, there was a space there for focus indicator. And we never checked it off because we really didn't pay attention to it too much. But we're going to pay attention to it. And what it means is that Dr. Hennel will be focusing on that one indicator, but he will also provide information on all of the indicators and we will evaluate on all. But his emphasis will be noted and we can respond to that. We also talked about when comments will be required. Right now, the comments are required if we have exemplary, exemplary or needs improvement or unsatisfactory, but it's not for proficient. So some members felt that it's easy, you know, to just take the path of least resistance and just check proficient because then we don't want to make a comment. So we're trying to find ways in which we can, you know, encourage comments because they really are so much more telling than just a check mark. So we appreciate the people who have spent the time making those comments. Dr. Hennel talked about folders that he's going to have that will make it much easier for us to access previous information and superintendent's goals and all sorts of things that he provides us with. So it'll be in an easier format that we'll be able to locate all that data very simply. We'll be meeting quarterly with the superintendent, with our first meeting scheduled for early November. And that's it. Any questions or anybody from the committee want to add anything?
Let me see. Any? Thanks, Barbara.
Sure.
All right. We're down to the end. Any old business? New business? Remarks for the group committee?
I have something.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I just wanted to address the comment made by Sarah regarding more professional development available to us. There is something that NASC offers. It's called the Friday Learning Lunch. And they have different topics. I think it happens about once a month and it's in our NASC materials that we get. So there's one this Friday and it's on that court case that Mike told us about, about parents being able to opt out of certain discussions and books and stuff like that. So look for that because I went to two of them and I found it very informative. It's a Zoom from 12 to 1:00. And it's got some good topics.
Yeah. Good point. Thanks, Barbara.
Sure.
Anybody else? Yeah.
I just wanted to say, I realize that I overlooked something else with the regional agreement, and that is Greg, all of your work that you have put into this. You, you and I are the only people here that have been through that whole process from the beginning. And you put a lot of work into that. So thank you.
Good point.
Thank you for that as well.
Dave? Dave? I was part in the two at the beginning.
Yeah. Barbara was part of the two.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Yeah. During, there was a, there was a lot to present under the superintendent's report, but we forgot to mention the equally important thing. So yesterday and today, we started the first of three rounds of district administrative walkthroughs of all five schools. And that involves Dr. Hennel, myself, Mr. Bueno, our student services director, Nate Lou, as well as our assistant student services director, Jen Bell, and our principals and assistant principals. And we were able to see, how many classrooms?
Twenty-three or 24.
Pre-K through 12. And we saw a lot of great things happening. We've been trying to reach out to the staff afterwards and give them a couple focal points and celebrate a couple of things along the way. And we've had a good time, too. We're looking forward to doing it again in about a month or so. And then we'll have a third round a little bit later on in the year. But we're trying to get these, get these in before the budget season really kicks in. But we're trying to get these, get these in before the budget season really kicks in and get down to the nitty-gritty. Today, you know, we were so busy today that Mr. Bueno got really tired and had to take a nap after before this meeting. So we get a dose of, especially the elementary life. But we, we really genuinely appreciate and saw firsthand the hard work that our building administrators, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our custodians, our specialists, every single person. It's an all-out team effort. And I just want you all to know, they're working very hard and they're very busy, very, very busy. So we just wanted to at least make you aware of that.
Cool. All right.
Just on the, the high schoolers coming to the elementary schools with the, with the ethics, both my kids came home that day and were like, oh, it was so cool. They loved it, so.
I just wanted to thank all the building administrators and teachers for the open houses this week. It's been a really busy week here in Central Berkshire. Nessakis Open House was really well-attended. Wakona not as well-attended as last year. And I kind of find that a little sad that all of a sudden we have this drop-off, like really well-attended elementary school, middle school, and then parents don't feel like they need to go and check out their high school kids' classrooms.
It's probably because their kids not wanting their parents to be there.
Dr. Bosberg, so I listened to Dr. Bosberg or the entire team's presentation at Nessakis, whatever night that was this week. And one thing that he said to the sixth-grade parents, which really resonated for me, is that sixth grade is always full, right? Elementary school is always full. And he said, you're, you're going to think that your students, your children don't need you here as they get older and they actually need you here more. And, and so he implored the parents that were, that filled the auditorium to please continue showing up in seventh and eighth grade and beyond. And I thought, he said it way more eloquently than I just did, but I thought it was pretty powerful.
Our new Wakona principal has already started dialogue about ways in which to, for lack of a term, change up the Wakona open house to try to inspire more people to go, to try to get folks to reinvest in that night because it's not time to take your hands off the wheel or the gas pedal at the high school level. So she's already in talks with the staff about that.
All right. Anybody else? Yeah, Jake.
Just, we get solicitations from our school committee email. I know probably everyone gets the same email that I get for various things. But we had one maybe a week or two ago that was advocacy for funding and sort of legislator relate, legislation related to rural issues and such. And I'm not interested in really talking about that particular solicitation, but just maybe generally as a committee thinking about how we advocate for budget decisions that are happening right now in the governor's budget for FY '27, now, not in March. Particularly around, you know, Representative Blay out of Franklin County, the rural commission work, which has a lot of pieces that do touch us, particularly the rural aid piece. So it might be something for the committee to talk about. I don't know if we'd have an ad hoc, but she reminded me in a call this week that it's really powerful when they get letters from us. If we don't show up, it's not enough that they're just pushing for this legislation. So I think it's something we're thinking about and talking about. The more individuals they hear from, the more powerful I think the message is to support that. Just thought I would offer that up.
Thanks. I did send that note out and I hope, I heard from a few people that said they forwarded along, but you know, please do, per Jake's comment, you know, it's already written for you, so you just got to put your name on it and send it off to the elected officials and support. Appreciate it.
Okay. To Jake's point, if anybody is interested in joining the district tour, and I've got them here, and if you'd like to meet your, the reps in the state senate or mark while they're here in the district, just reach out to me and let me know. And if you want to be part of that conversation, let me know. And I can share my ideas around the funding mechanism and the rural needs in general. And we could have a joint discussion so that we're kind of, we can network together. I'd be more than happy to arrange that.
Anything else? Quick, the remarks have been good a few times. It's great. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, vote please. Any discussion first?
Okay, Dr. Krefreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Alum Matazori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Longsbury?
Yes.
Stephen Morantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.